Good Friday morning, guys, or Friday afternoon, excuse me, two shows today. Thank you for joining us. My name is Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seaville Show. We're grateful for your patronage and for watching the program and the network. Guys, we genuinely and truly enjoyed connecting with you through this platform. Of course, we're live in Charlottesville across central Virginia, the Commonwealth of the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. We're presented by Dr. Scott Wagner of Scott Wagner Integrated Medicine, our friends at Ting Fiber Internet are the backbone of the network, crazy fast internet, Ting Fiber Internet. We'll spend about 30 minutes with a gentleman that I think you guys have grown to know and to love, and Brian Pinkston, who's running for Charlottesville City Council. If you have any questions or comments or props for Mr. Brian Pinkston, put them in the feed on any of these social media platforms you're watching the show upon. Keep them respectful. We don't mind challenging topics or questions, but they certainly need to be respectful, please. Judah Wickhauer is our director, J-Dubs. If you could go to the studio camera and we can welcome Brian Pinkston to the show. Good afternoon, Brian. How are you?
Good, good, very good. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. How's the campaign going?
The campaign's going well. It's a very different campaign than two years ago. Two years ago, it was my campaign manager, Isaac Weinstein, I against the world almost, it felt like. It was all about door knocking. We knocked on north of 3,700 doors, talked to, you know, over 1,000 people at their front door. Really enjoyed that experience because it let me meet people all over the city and understand the city sort of from the ground up and people from the ground up. But this time has been different, both due to COVID and just due to just the strategy we picked this time. We've been very fortunate this time compared to last time, the amount of money we've been able to raise. And you can do more when you've got money. So we're very grateful for those who've chosen to support our campaign. We have some television coming out soon with Comcast and on NBC 29. So that's really cool. We were able to do a video shoot with Mr. Ty Cooper.
He's great.
Yeah, so that was very cool. We've got, we've even got, I'm sure you know Alex Bryant.
I do.
Yeah, Alex has been our genius with helping with YouTube ads and things like that. So it's, it's very different. The other piece this time that makes things different is the rise of early voting. So we, we sat down and really were strategizing early on, like, it used to be the case, you'd say, this is the election date, and you'd back up three weeks or so from that and really plan your strategy in terms of your mail. Well, this time, voting began 45 days or so before. And so we've really had to put out more mail than we would normally. Instead of two or three pieces, we put out four pieces. And so it's pretty cool. You know, I'm calling people. We have these virtual phone banks to call folks and, yeah, I've gotten your mail. I've seen your signs. So it's been fun. Yeah. I think beyond the fact that the support we've been able to raise, which has made a different kind of campaign possible, the other thing is just this amazing team that I have. So every Sunday afternoon, we have a Google Meet at 1:00. And I just have some really powerhouse people that have stepped up to help me. Tom Vanderver, Ivy Hinton, Jonathan Stevens, Alex Bryant, my campaign manager, Gia Abernathy, I mean, it's just Deshad Cooper. Do you know Deshad?
No.
Yeah, I need to introduce you to Deshad. So it's, you know, I've just got these people that are helping me, you know, helping me navigate, you know, buying television ads, helping me navigate a social media presence. So it's, it's been fun and I'm really grateful.
What's your most favorite aspect of campaigning?
You know, it's interesting. I am an introvert through and through, but the part that I enjoy the most is when I'm actually able to connect with a person at their front door after a forum, you know, a conversation.
You may be introverted, but you have the gift of human connection. I mean, you're extremely approachable and likable.
I appreciate that. Yeah. It, I guess for, I'm told for true extroverts, they get a lot of energy out of that. I enjoy it, but it, I do have to sort of recharge afterwards.
Sure. How about this question? The least favorite aspect?
Uh, you know, I still do not like asking for money. We've been very fortunate this time. It is interesting. We're definitely building off two years ago. You know, we did lay the groundwork. There is name recognition here now when there weren't, when there was not two years ago. And so I'm grateful, you know, running two years ago was a really an experience of a lifetime. I enjoyed it a lot more than I thought I would. And it wasn't like if I chose to not run again, that that would have been wasted. But it, there is something fulfilling about the fact that we ran two years ago, we came close, we built something, we're building on that now. And I like that. That makes me, but, but still, one, one thing you always have to do if you're running a campaign is to raise money. And I still don't like to do that.
You've done that very well.
We have, yeah.
Um, I think-
There's been a real recognition from people, a whole, you know, many people that, that I would have something to offer this time that would be valuable. And people have just kind of stepped up. I mean, I have had to do some, you know, calling for money, but it's been a lot easier.
How did the, the forum go last night with Mr. Sean Tubbs and Mr. Neil Williamson?
I thought it went well, as well as, I guess this is the fourth-
You've done a lot.
Well, you know, we did yours, which was really sort of the major one, as far as I'm concerned. It's a lot different than, again, two years ago, where you had these forums, all the neighborhoods, you'd be meeting, you know, in person. I got frustrated with some of those, honestly, because you'd spend a night preparing and then a night doing it. And that kept me from door knocking. This is easier in that you just do your thing, you know, you get on Zoom. But it's also, you know, it's Zoom.
Right.
And it's, it is hard. I do feel it's a little harder to communicate. It's, it's also very interesting. You know, right off the bat this morning, I got feedback in an email about what I said about the parking deck. I'm seeing some stuff on social media now about the parking deck and my views on that.
Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, sure, absolutely. So one of the things that I really want to be is data-driven. And I want to listen to what the evidence and what the case, cases that people make. So when I came to your show in March, if you recall, I was like, no, I'm not really sure we need a parking deck right now. Because that was, you know, that was the data that I had at the time. I had just begun to do my research. I got some feedback from people that I respect in the downtown business mall. I'm an advocate for downtown business.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm an advocate for the poorest people in our community, too. I don't see those two as mutually exclusive. And I think when people start to pit those against each other, something's gone horribly awry. We absolutely need a thriving business community if we're going to fund the sort of equity programs that we need to make the city what we all want it to be. So anyway, I got feedback then. And so I set up a Zoom meeting with Mr. Chris Engel, who is, as I understand it, the sort of expert in the city on parking. And I said, look, show me the data. He took me through the parking studies. He, he took me through the costing exercises, the agreements that have been made with, with the county. I found his case compelling. And because of that, I do think, you know, I think that it's reasonable to say that we should build a deck of some sort. I'm also very concerned that this existing deck, which I guess is there, is old. These decks don't last for 100 years. That one's past its, its service life. And so I get the fact that we don't like cars. We don't want to be a car-centric city. But that future's not here yet. And we need to be thoughtful about, about that. So, you know, I did receive data, or I received some feedback this morning, both in email and social media. And I would just welcome whomever to provide, you know, the data from the other side. I've looked, yeah, I've tried to be thoughtful and objective about this topic. One of the things that I don't want to do if I'm elected, and this is sort of a concern of mine about the city in general, is that we tend to have a, I think, a tendency to punt. So the Belmont Bridge, that has gone on forever. It's just a bridge. The school reconfiguration, we've been talking about that for over a decade. The longer you wait to make a decision, sometimes it's a good thing to wait. You get more data, you get more feedback. That's important. But at some point, you need to make a decision about some of these large infrastructure things. And they only get to be more expensive the longer you wait. So-
I learned from former councillor Kathy Galvin that we've been talking the West Main Streetscape project since the late 1980s.
Yeah. And again, I, I hate parking decks. I hate cars. I mean, I have a moped. It's, it's in ill repair right now, but I would much prefer to ride a moped. You can talk to anyone in my family. Climate change is a fact. We need to do everything we can to address it. But we really have to think about the city in terms of a system. And part of that system, part of what it takes for the virtuous cycle, circle of progress in the city is for visitors to come in, tourists to come in, is for business people to have a place to park. And when we have this county, county courthouse here, what I've been told is that if we simply allow all that parking to go into Market Street, then that will effectively render that, that site useless for other people. If that data, if I'm, you know, if I'm wrong with the premises that I've been given, or the information that's been shared, or some fault in my reasoning, I would love to hear from people.
I think that's an important sizzle reel to cut. Why don't we cut that? So the community hears what he just said right there. And we can send that your way-
Sure, thank you.
-as well. Judah, let's start from the question about parking, all the way through that answer, if we could. What, what are the topics as we head closer to the primary? What are you hearing? Door knocking? What's important to this community? We covered parking. What else is important to this community?
Yeah, I think the thing that's far, getting far more interest in the community is the land use map that's come out.
People are so confused with that, including myself. It is a complicated matter.
It is. I, I do think it's kind of like, I don't know, and I don't mean this in any way to be sort of like putting anyone down. If someone were to show me sheet music, I cannot interpret sheet music. I used to, I took eight years of piano, which I don't remember. But I can't read music, right? If you're used to looking at maps or things like that, it's a little less complicated, I guess. I don't know. I'm not saying that it's that hard to understand. On the other hand, if it's something you're not used to looking at, maybe that's why sometimes. And then the various gradations of the different options. I, I think the, the simple answer is that, you know, the devil is in the details, like always. I think that in general, the map is a reasonable approximation or a possible future that is being offered up by a consultant that we've hired. The, the process is that the planning commission's going to listen to it, right? And then the planning commission is going to make a recommendation to city council. City council is the duly elected body, and they're going to, you know, one way or the other, either vote on it now or kick it down the road. I, you know, on all of these issues, including the parking deck, it, candidates are in an awkward position. I don't want to do anything to undermine the process. Not that someone listening to me would necessarily say, oh, we should do something different. But I don't want to undermine the processes that are in place. And I do feel like the folks that are leading the planning commission and the folks on city council are being thoughtful in working as best they can. Obviously, we've just come out of a pandemic. We're coming out of a pandemic. I know that many people, particularly in the neighborhood associations, don't feel like they've been, had a chance to, to really give input. And I've sat in on some of these meetings. And that's probably true. And so I don't, my suspicion is this, this will, will be dragged out a little further. I don't know that for sure. Yeah, so.
Questions are coming in. I'll get to the questions on Twitter and LinkedIn. If you guys have any questions for Brian, just put them in the comment section. We'll spend about 18 more minutes here with the candidate. So much I want to cover with you. Let's talk the school reconfiguration. Why don't we start open-ended? Anywhere you want to go on that. And then I have some specifics. School reconfiguration is a hot button issue. Anyone you talk to, especially as parents. I got a little boy. You got kids that are adults. You remember how important school was. Start with that one, and then I'll, I'll ask you some specifics.
Yeah. So I understand that, I guess, last week, they had a meeting where they chose, choosing, choosing to go forward. I think 50 million is the sort of baseline that people are thinking could be up to 90.
I've heard, I've heard 90 to 100 more realistically. Yeah.
I guess depending on the options that they select. Yeah, I mean, it's on my website. I certainly support the, the school reconfiguration program. The issue with all of these things is how we pay for it, right? My understanding is that in fiscal year 23, they're talking about a two, two, two cent increase in the millage rate. That question came up last night, and I, I basically said, I need to know more before I'm willing to commit to that. I, I am not opposed to raising taxes in the city. And for good or for ill, the way our system works is it falls on homeowners and property owners. The concern I have is really more in the short term. When housing assessments continue to go up, people are already seeing an effective tax increase on their properties. And so I want to know a little more about how we're going to subsidize those property tax payments for people that are not well off. We don't have the option to really like, you know, progressive form of taxation that would tax, you know, the wealthier more than, than those who are poorer. But it's clear, it's clearly the case that we're going to, we need to raise more revenue to pull these things off. And either, you know, a sort of special tax dedicated specifically for the schools, or something across the board. So I, yeah, I'm committed to getting that done. And so that's going to mean we, we raise money. So I guess the, what follows from that is I'm going to end up, you know, this next council may raise taxes.
On Twitter, a question's come in that I have. This is from Chris Campbell. He says, Jerry, you often talk on your show about the city evolving into a playground for the white and the rich. Please bring this topic up with the candidate, Mr. Brian Pinkston, and ask him how we can prevent that from happening.
I think that is a really, really important point. It is interesting, and I think that with the activist community in particular, and with the mayor in particular, there is this feeling of almost being colonized, you know, with students, with out-of-town visitors, with folks who've only lived here a few years, you know, and are able to, you know, you can move from Washington DC or New York City and buy a really nice house here.
We're now called a Zoom town. A Zoom town that's been flooded by digital nomads working from ISPs-
Okay.
-at big city firms in DC where they're making more money, and they have lower cost of living here, so they can spend more, buy more.
Interesting. That makes sense. I can see how that would, would be true of Charlottesville. Yeah. So I, I think that the way that we address that, well, first of all, I think that there's always a, I guess, a silver lining or a good point about that is that we do have a level of desirability. And that's a good thing. The, the bad part of it is, like you said, it can very well become a playground for the rich. And so I, I think along with the schools, the other thing we really need to make a strong commitment to is the affordable housing plan. So I, it's the same consultant that's doing the land use map right now and helping us with the, with the comp plan. I've read the plan, the affordable housing plan, a couple of times. I think it's a really strong plan. It's not perfect. But I like the fact that it's, it's, it's not just, oh, let's throw more money at one thing or the other. It's thoughtful about subsidization. It's thoughtful about rehabbing a home, both homes and also investing in public housing. It's thoughtful about the need for the university and for the county to be participants. It's thoughtful about creating an office, a housing director, which I think that, that role exists, but I'm not sure there's a person in it. It's thoughtful about putting together an overall, not just, again, pouring money into something, but setting up a program and a plan that we address this. And so the, the request is $10 million a year for 10 years. And if we did that, if we do that, it, it would, it would put Charlottesville sort of in the upper ranks of really progressive cities. What's interesting is if you look at the numbers in the, in the plan, it's $1 million basically for this, the staff and the organizational structure to make this work. $2 million a year for a subsidization, and $7 million directly for programs. And some of those funds were already spending. So I'm not sure it's going to be a net increase of 10 million, or maybe it's just a net increase of eight or nine. But, so I think that's one thing that we do to, to focus on the issue that you raised about being a playground for the rich. I think that there are lots of other things that we need to, to focus on as well. I think that the work that Rich Schuyler is doing with the Network to Work program, focusing on people in our community who need jobs. I think that the work that's going on with K-Tech and now with PVCC in terms of governor providing tuition assistance and so forth for folks in certain fields, I think all of those things are important. And, you know, we, we do need to make, Charlottesville needs to be a community that's more than just about the university or more than just about, those things are important. But, but there needs to be a, a sense of place here so that we are more than, you know, digital nomads.
Bill McChenzy, thank you for watching. I know you have some questions. This one's coming in via LinkedIn. Jerry, please ask Brian Pinkston's take on added density in this area and where he stands on that. You've covered that already.
That's the land use map.
Yeah, that's the land use map, yeah.
So I'll just say this. I'm in general, generally in favor of increased density. And the reason for that, there's a couple of reasons. A, we need to increase housing stock. Now, it's, it's not, it doesn't necessarily follow that if you increase housing stock, the, the, as you increase supply, it doesn't necessarily follow that the pricing will drop because markets aren't necessarily elastic in that sense. But it can certainly prevent, slow the rate of increase-
Absolutely.
... of housing costs. And so, yeah, I'm in favor of increased density for that reason. I'm also in favor of it because the data is very clear. Jory Jaeger, you probably had on your show before-
He's amazing.
Yeah, the Mapping Seaville Project. And this isn't just Charlottesville. This is throughout the country. These racist covenants that were set up to exclude persons of color, these R1 zoning that was set up with these huge lots, basically with a notion of, you know, creating places for white folks with wealth to sort of have their own existence. And so I think that, you know, thinking hard about equity, thinking about the past and how we address the past and live in the present, I think that that's important. Now, that doesn't mean I'm, I'm not from, when someone says they're in favor of increased density, that doesn't necessarily mean they're look, you know, looking for an apartment block on every, and that's, that's the challenge with the land use map and why the real work, I think, will be when we start writing the detailed zoning ordinance. So for instance, Click, or folks associated with Click, the Coalition for Low Income Housing, they made a really strong point about the fact that if you upzone places like 10th and Page, that is going to attract developers and drive out, will increase gentrification in those neighborhoods. So it may be the case that we need to think carefully about which neighborhoods we upzone and how. It may be the case that, you know, when we tailor the zoning laws, we need to be very specific about, okay, what sort of structure is acceptable. I was over in the Meadows the other day, which not many people go to, doesn't seem like.
Where's the Meadows?
So it's back behind Best Buy.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the one part of the city that's across the corner over there.
Okay.
And I was proud to have anchor at least one yard sign-
Great.
-there. But, you know, if you look at the Meadows, it's interesting. You have lots of apartments. You have some, you have lots of duplexes. You have, so it's, it's interesting. It's an interesting case study of, you know, I'm not sure we want the whole city to look like the Meadows. I mean, there's a, there's a strong case to be made for preserving the integrity of neighborhoods, to have a sense of place and character. And so we're just going to have to be thoughtful when we get down into the weeds of crafting these zoning ordinances.
You have on LinkedIn, on Twitter, and on Facebook, multiple people asking, were you surprised that Mayor Walker chose to run again? Jerry asked Brian's opinion on Mayor Walker's campaign. Three different questions. I'm sure others have this, are wondering this as well.
No, I was not surprised.
Neither was I.
Yeah. She's, she's a strong person with a strong platform.
It's her primary source of income.
Well, I don't know that.
That's true.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna-
Yeah, that's me saying that. Yeah, that's me saying that.
Um, I, yes, no, I'm not surprised. And I welcome her participation, just like I would any person. I have always said that I believe that the mayor has brought a level of critique to systems of power that have existed in Charlottesville and, you know, throughout the country, but specifically here, that is well worth all of us listening to. Now, we can disagree about what she's been able to do with that platform and the ways in which she's sort of gone about to make her point. But I, I respect her. I respect her desire to serve the city. I respect the critique that she's brought. I, I don't agree with her on everything. And, you know, I, I will say this, if, if I end up on council and she doesn't, one of the things that I would love the opportunity to do, and I mean this with all sincerity, is to meet with her once a month and say, okay, what, what things do you represent or concerns that you have that I could, I could represent going forward? Now, I, yeah, so I mean, obviously, the mayor's controversial for lots of reasons. And there's lots of things that she's done and said that I don't, you know, agree with and that I would do differently. And I, I do think that we can move the city forward in ways where everyone sort of feels included. But at the same time, I think there's a tendency to just dismiss her as just divisive and nothing more. And I, I think that's to miss her significance.
What separates you from your competition?
Well, we're all just different people. One of the things that I like-
From a policy or platform or ideology standpoint?
Yeah. So one of the things that I respected about Carl Brown when he came on your show at one point was he, and I think he may have been distinguishing himself from the mayor, perhaps even, I don't know. But just talking about how each of us has, brings our own narrative, our own story to Charlottesville, you know, this metaphor of a quilt or whatever, which I guess is kind of hokey at this point. But, and so I think if you look at Carl, myself, and Juan, you'll see three different, three different strands of, of people there. You know Carl's story, you know Juan's story, and then, and then my stories. I, similarly, I guess, to Juan, I came here to do graduate work, had children, have children, they're still with us. And, you know, ended up living here, staying here, and became home. I've been very engaged with the university. I not only did graduate work there, but I, you know, I worked there in facilities management. So I know the university very well and, and know this community. And I don't know the community as well as Juan does, for sure. But I guess my point is that I think I bring a perspective in terms of my work and life experience here, and also just professionally, the, the things that I've done, my project management background, the work I've done in facilities management. Also have, you know, I'm an engineer, and also have graduate degrees in the humanities. So the humanities, I think, are, they're often sort of overlooked as not serious, but they are very important in terms of thinking well about other people and how we, you know, get, how we get along, you know. So I studied philosophy. I did that while I was also working full-time and raising a family. And I think that that's just given me a, a broadness of perspective such that, for instance, I'm not going to automatically reject what the mayor brings to the table.
Abba Bello?
Yeah.
Abba Bello is watching. Brian, I know you're going to do everything you can to help the people. That is without a doubt in my mind.
Hey, Abba, how you doing, buddy?
From Abba Bello. Great comment right there, Abba. So this is coming in via Instagram. Every social platform has its own unique demographic. And this one from Instagram, from a graduate student who lives in the city.
Okay.
Mr. Pinkston, what is the role of UVA in helping shape the city's future?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah, you know, it's interesting. When it comes to UVA, I personally have to be thoughtful in my responses because I work for the university. But I, I want to just affirm the work and the mission and statements that President Ryan has made in terms of really wanting to go beyond just talk about equity and talk about good relationships and talk about these things, and actually put money and concrete plans in place. And so I think you're seeing that. Juan has been a part of this working group between the city and the university. You're seeing things like the university committing to building some affordable housing and things like that. So I really believe that at the senior level of the university, there's a willingness and a desire to partner more closely with the city. There's a lot of old tapes, I'll call them, both, not so much on the university at this point, but within the city, you know, this- but within the city, you know, this didn't work in the past and why will it work in the future? Which is normal. I've talked to folks who've been on city council in the past and they're like, yeah, we tried all that business of working with the university before and nothing really came of it. And, but I think this time is different. I think that you've got folks at the university who really want to make it, you know. And honestly, I think August 11th and 12th really crystallized that with people. They were like, this is, race is a, is a central issue in this country still. The university has a history of doing some terrible things, both segregation, eugenics, a whole bunch of stuff. The university wants to demonstrate that it, that it's different, that it's caring about the future and that it wants to do the right thing now. President Ryan's notion of being not only a great place, but a good place. I, I think that he really believes that. And, and so that's why you're seeing some of these initiatives come out. And so that is, I suppose, a silver lining for some of the terrible things that have happened here in the last few years. Just that people at the university realize how important Charlottesville is, not only to the success of the university, but just in and of itself, you know? One of the interesting things in this kind of goes back to your point about the, you know, a playground for, for white wealthy people. It is, it can be that. But one of the interesting things about Charlottesville, also compare it to say my hometown of Albany, Georgia. Albany's pretty monolithic. And there's the African American community and the conservative white community. And that's, there are some other folks, but that's pretty much, pretty much it. No offense, Albany. But in Charlottesville, you just have this range. You've got refugees, you've got folks like myself, you've got, you know, you've got the African American community, which is not monolithic, you know, by the way. There are different voices in that community who see things differently, but still is an important part of the community. You've got the university, you've got professors, you've got, you just have this really rich panoply of the stew of different perspectives and voices, which makes it a really fascinating place to live. I've never lived in a place where you talk to someone, you're like, well, so what brought you here? And it's like, well, we were looking around for a good place to retire. And this seemed like a good fit. And, and so you have that, that group as well. But that is, you know, that fact, those facts are part of what make Charlottesville unique and interesting. But it also, it makes it hard to govern.
Bill McChenzy, and we'll spend a couple more minutes here with you. Bill McChenzy said, and Jude is going to get a very sharp photo of you, so you're smiling. Brian Pinkston, guys, is running for Charlottesville City Council. The Democratic primary is June 8th. Bill McChenzy says the land use thing is a national movement. It has not worked well in communities such as Minneapolis. Please consider that. We respect that. We respect your opinion, sir.
Absolutely.
This is coming in from Jen on Twitter, who is asking for your opinion on bicycle and pedestrian safety in the city, which is important to this guy. He rides a moped.
I haven't ridden my moped much lately. It needs some work, but I want to get back on it. Yeah, the thing for me with bicycle, this, this topic is I, I feel like we always, and you'll see it in the past comp plans and in the drafts now, like, yeah, we want to do this. It's this important thing for us. And, and it seems like we always struggle to actually make it happen. And so really, in anything that I do when I'm evaluating a proposal, just like when I evaluate a proposal that comes before city council, I'm going to, one of the first hats I'm going to put on is, how does this impact equity? That's going to be a lens through which I look through things. Another lens through which I will look through things is the environment. And, and so I see this whole issue of, you know, bicycles and so forth is, is connected to that. Not only, you know, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and so forth, but just having a city that's walkable and livable and not just full of streets. And I think there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of interest in this topic and people want to do it, right? I, I know that former councilwoman Kathy Galvin, you know, she did a lot of work with the safe streets, the complete streets and all those sorts of things and trying to build that into our, our design parameters for new construction. So I don't, I'm not sure I have all the information that would, except to say that it is a lens through which I would look at new proposed developments in, because the environment's important to me.
Two questions left for you.
Okay.
The multiple folks are all asking about the revenue sharing agreement. We won't go down the revenue sharing agreement today. How about we do this instead for those that are asking? The relationship between the city and Almarle County? How we can make it smoother? I mean, the city and the county are going hand in hand. Most of us don't even know when we're crossing the line.
Yeah.
Right? Anywhere you want to go on that topic?
Yeah, well, I appreciate the fact that we don't have to go down the rabbit hole of revenue.
I mean, that's done. Guys, the revenue sharing agreement is over. Let's get beyond that.
Yeah, and this comes from a fellow who's going to.
Yeah, I live in the county, I work in the city and I'm running for the board. Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think it's important, and I really do not mean this as sort of a glib thing. I, I think it's important to think about the common good. And so, like you said, you can barely tell when you step from the county to the city. The same from the city to the university. And so those three entities and then Central Virginia more broadly, we are in this together. And so I think we need to start from that perception of what does it mean to be in this together? And for every issue that, for any sort of limitation or cost or whatever that is imposed by Charlottesville on the county for some reason, Charlottesville is still sort of the center of this whole thing, geographically, historically, and I would say culturally.
Hundred percent.
And so that's just a fact. So starting from that and then working with groups like the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, who by the way is doing really good work to like move beyond kind of high level atmospheric.
Keith Smith is watching you now.
Yeah, and former, you know, Chip Boils used to be over there. Just, you know, what does it look like to have a plan for regional transportation? What does it look like to have a plan for the environment for the region? And so I guess what I would say with, with the county, one of the things that would be important to me is put myself in the place of people that live in the county, think about their needs as well as what's important to the city. I would really like us to work better together at, at the level of, you know, elected officials. I want Charlottesville, and this is one reason why the parking deck is important to me or is, is an important thing, is we've made commitments to another entity. And I think it's important for one council to honor the commitments and not restart every negotiation when a new council comes on board. So that's what I would say about the county.
For those, this will be the last question I ask Brian. For those that are, I'm watching the feed on all the social platforms. We're able to aggregate them on one stream. The parking deck thing is coming up here. So we'll take the, his answer and his take, which I thought was logical and reasonable at the beginning of the show. We'll send it to him. We'll put it on our network later today, maybe next week, so you can hear his answer, which I think is thoughtful and reasonable. We'll get you out of here on this note.
Okay.
Why should the city of Charlottesville vote Brian Pinkston?
Yeah, because I think that regardless of the tie and perhaps my opinions on the parking decks, I think that you will find that equity is not just like a sort of bolt on to me. I want to do everything I can to invest and raise everyone in this city. If that perhaps means raising taxes at some point, then I'll think about that. If that involves supporting the downtown business community so that we can bring in the revenue we need to do, what we need to do, I'll think about that. But the main thing that I want to, to offer is, and this is our tagline, I know every politician could say this, but I want to be compassionate, thoughtful and effective. And so compassion is important to me. Empathy is important. Those are deep core values of mine. It will inform everything that I do. I want to be thoughtful. So I think it's very easy, particularly for those in the activist community, to move solely from a value which is maybe important to a conclusion. And I think we need to be thoughtful about how we implement our values. And that's where I'm getting at with the parking deck. And then the third thing that I would say is that I want to be effective. I think if you, if you talk, you listen to like the forum last night, you see from both Carl, Juan and myself, we all want to get stuff done. You know, not just to get stuff done, but we want to make progress. You know, for instance, two years ago, we were just kind of talking about having an affordable housing plan. Oh, by golly, if this council didn't come up with a solid plan. So now let's get the darn thing done.
Brian, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I really appreciate it.
I enjoy spending time with you and talking with you. You're one of the really great guys here. Good luck with the campaign. We will reach out again. Enjoy the weekend. I'm sure it's not going to be much of R and R for you as you're in the bottom of the ninth inning here with your campaign. His name is Brian Pinkston, guys. The Democratic primary is June 8th. We're just trying to get issues and topics out there so you, the viewer, can be more informed. That's the I Love Seville Show. I'll close with this message. Please keep your support local in the community. Please be safe as we're getting out of this thing we call COVID. And folks, enjoy three days off. Take care and thank you for joining us. Thank you, Brian. Really good.